Tuesday, August 29th, 2023, Gardner City Council Special Meeting will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Present.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Rhonda Cormier?
Present.
Counselor Dernallawitz?
Present.
Counselor Harder?
Present.
Counselor Heath?
Present.
Counselor Mack?
Present.
Counselor Tison?
Present.
Counselor Tyros?
Present.
Counselor Walsh?
Present.
And President Krasinski?
Present. Before I state the purpose of the meeting, I'd like to acknowledge that the executive session in item number 11039, "In Order Authorizing the City to Borrow $550,000 for Waterford Street School Renovations," has been removed from the calendar as of yesterday because the Law Department has requested more time. The topic of tonight's special meeting is item number 11023, Charter Review Committee Final Review Recommendations. This was in the City Council and referred to the Committee of the Whole and Law Department on June 20th, 2023. We were granted more time on July 3rd, 2023, and on August 7th, 2023, it was referred back to the Law Department. We received the document that was requested from the Law Department, which was that language be put in legislative form that excluded the section that we had voted to be removed for the changes and that added gender-neutral language to the department. That has been submitted back to the City Council by the Law Department. And this item was first introduced to the City Council in August of 2022. It has been before the City Council since then and then was referred to a charter review committee that the City Council had formed. And then within that time, the Charter Review Committee had done their process, beginning on February 16th, when they had their first meeting. On February 23rd, 2023, a public hearing was held on the proposed amendments to this city charter, where the public was invited to give their feedback on it. And then since then, we have received the recommendations from the Charter Review Committee, which was listed in item 11023. The contents of that are included in our council packet for this evening. Just so the public knows, I wanted to share that information regarding the purpose of the meeting and the reason that we're here this evening. Since this item was originally proposed by Mayor Nicholson back a year ago at this time, I would like to give him the opportunity to speak on the item.
Thank you, Madam President. As is listed, as we just stated, the item was first submitted by my office to create a special act charter drafting committee pursuant to the general laws back in August of 2022, though that committee was formally created by vote in the City Council in December of 2002, and the appointees submitted for confirmation by the City Council in consideration in December of 2022 and confirmed in January of 2023. There was a public hearing held by the Charter Draft Committee, Charter Review Committee or the Special Act Drafting Committee, as it was legally known as, and the vote made by the City Council. And at that hearing, 52 changes were proposed to the committee. The committee voted to move forward with eight of those 52 requested changes. The City Council at this last meeting voted to move that from eight to seven, removing any changes to Section 6 of the city charter. Just to go over those that are there, all amendments to Section 12 change the current election timeline for the city to mirror those of the state election. The reasoning for those is to make information more accessible to the voters rather than having a simple four weeks in between a preliminary election and a final election, moving that to the state timeline to give further time for voters to ask questions of those running. But it also creates, fixes rather a legal conundrum that's recent for the city clerk's office in that with the recent passage of the Votes Act that was adopted as Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, the city is required in all municipal elections to have mail-in voting. And in order to get those applications into the clerk's office, the ballots mailed out and then returned back to the city clerk's office by the time that those are statutorily due under the Votes Act, having that short timeframe of simply four weeks to get those ballots ordered, let alone received to be mailed out, does create somewhat of a tight timeline to get those in. Section 18 allows for more flexibility in the city clerk's office publishing information for the results of a municipal preliminary election, as right now it requires it to be posted in a newspaper rather than in other formats that we have now that weren't around in 1923 when the charter was written, such as the city's website or other publications online rather than in print newspaper. Section 29 removes the requirement of a full publication of any city ordinances in a print newspaper rather than simply putting a summary, which is what this change would do, in the newspaper and allowing the full publication to be online. Section 32 increases the length of time for an acting mayor. That way, we don't run into a situation like we saw in Salem this year where they had a special election in February, that now they have a regular election again in November, where you have two elections for the same office in the same year, where we spend about $15,000 per election here in Gardner. Section 34, 35, and 51 are currently in conflict with Massachusetts general law and is actually illegal for the city to follow those, particularly with the enactment of Chapter 30B and the other procurement laws of the Commonwealth that supersede our city charter in those aspects. Therefore, this would remove those since we legally cannot follow those sections of the city charter. And Section 38 is also in conflict with existing state law, so that would also be in that same realm. Those were the proposals put forward by the charter commission, and then on August 7th, the City Council voted to request that the Law Department move forward with gender-neutral language throughout the Charter 12, after the Law Department noted that the legislature has typically required this be done in order for them to go through with the enactment process. That is reflected in Sections 4, 7, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 18, 19, 24, 25, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 37, and 38. The process is a home rule petition process that's done under General Laws, Chapter 43B, in which the City Council votes to send the proposed changes to the legislature. The House and the Senate would have to vote on it, and they would have to then be signed by the governor. And it has to have mayoral approval in order to get to that point. The city clerk's office did reach out to the Secretary of State's office, who then reached out to my office, just to loop me in on everything. The vote, it basically would have to go from the City Council in the process that was lined up before. If the council chooses to go forward with this item, the City Council, the voters in the election, and the voters back to the City Council to then send to the legislature. That is what the Assistant Secretary of State notified the city clerk and myself about earlier today. But happy to answer any questions. But since those were the proposals put forward by the commission, then I had appointing authority over three of the five members, I just wanted to run through what those recommendations were and the impact that they would have on our operations and why they were included in the item before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any questions for Mayor Nicholson from the City Council? Counselor Walsh?
I just want to confirm that the approval has to be not only by the legislature but also by voters of the city.
Yes, the way that it was explained to me by the Assistant Secretary of State, his first name is William.
Roseberry?
Was that if the ballot were to be before submission to the legislature, it would be considered a non-binding ballot question under Chapter 53, Section 18A, which is considered a public opinion advisory question. That would be simply asking the voters, should the City Council send this to the legislature or not? If that were to pass or if it were not to pass at a meeting after the election, the City Council could vote, since it is a non-binding vote, to either move forward with sending it to the legislature or move back to sending it with the legislature, thus preemptively doing the vote of the voters. Per what the Assistant Secretary of State told us, it'd have to be the House, Senate, and Governor's office. The other way to do it could be sending it immediately to the legislature, House, Senate, Governor's office, and then back to the voters after the governor signs it. So there's two different options that are there. The one that had been brought up when the proposal was originally put forward in August of 2022 was beginning with the voters and then to the legislature. That way, the voters have the option before any of this process even happens. It also requires mayoral approval of the process in order to send the question to the ballot under Section 18A of Chapter 53. I feel the voters should have a say in any changes to the charter that goes forward. So I just want to put my own personal emphasis, this does require mayoral approval that in order to put this forward, I think the voters should have a say in the process before we actually send the act final document to the legislature myself. But that is, again, the information that the Secretary of State's office provided myself after confirming with the city clerk, as I've heard his information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. Counselor Walsh?
Well, it just seems to be, that non-binding part of it seems to be in conflict with what the legislature has said the process is in the document that's been distributed to us, which indicates, as a matter of practice, the legislature or the City Council or town meeting locally almost always makes special laws, which this is, to adopt or change a charter contingent on voter approval. That's not non-binding, that's contingent. It has to be approved by the voters in order to proceed further. So if, well, I will get into it when the matter's on the floor, but the Secretary of State seems to be, their position seems to be at odds with what the legislature says is their process.
If I may, Madam President, the Assistant Secretary of State, who I spoke with today, actually you bring this up because I did ask that question. Home rule petitions don't need to go to the ballot at all. They said there's nothing stopping this from moving forward. It's just as a matter of practice, the legislature has requested that this be put to the ballot. Again, where it's the charter, I feel the voters should have a say in it. That's why the ballot is typical for the matter of practice and something that I think should be done. However, they did reiterate, since it is technically in the end a home rule petition under 43B, it technically doesn't need to go to the ballot at all, but it is something that's large enough that, correct, I believe should.
Counselor Walsh? Further questions, comments from the council? Counselor Boone?
Like your Madam President, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the Voters Act with requirements to mail out, mailing ballots. Is that to any, all registered voters or is that upon request?
Upon request by application submitted to the city clerk's office, and that request can be made either in person via mail or dropped off.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments for Mayor Nicholson from the council? Counselor Harder?
Yes, Madam President, I've been going over this charter change in my mind for quite some time. Many years ago, I think it was 2016 or 17, and now at the present. I believe I said this when all this started, so at the risk of sounding repetitive.
Counselor Harder, I just want to remind you, this is questions, comments for Mayor Nicholson, we're not in discussion on anything.
Okay, sorry.
Further questions, comments for Mayor Nicholson? Thank you, Counselor Dernallawitz?
I have no questions, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll call the meeting back to order. Because I neglected to do this at the beginning of the meeting, I'm going to make the open meeting recording announcement. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of the meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, subsection 20. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Steve Landry's recording this meeting. Anyone else? So Steve Landry. We have been distributed an amended document with some changes from the Law Department of the petition, and at this time, I would like to call City Solicitor John Flick up to explain those changes in the petition.
Thank you, Madam President. The changes are quite simple. First and foremost, in editing the home rule petition, which you will find on pages 6 through 10, Section 6 had not been removed from the home rule petition as approved by the council at the last meeting. So that was removed from what will eventually become the home rule petition to go to the legislature. On the first vote to be taken by the council on page 5, Section 2, the language there was simply changed to indicate that upon passage by the council, "The question approving the submission of the petition to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Legislature shall be submitted to the voters of the city of Gardner as a non-binding referendum in accordance with Massachusetts law." So that incorporates the process that the mayor just discussed, where pursuant to advice and comments we've received from both House Counsel and from the Secretary of State's office, this does not have to go to the voters. The council can pass the home rule petition tonight, and it can go straight to the legislature. However, it is recommended that it does go to the voters, and the mayor has indicated that he does want this to go to the voters. So what will happen is if the council passes this question tonight, the question will then go to the general ballot in November, at which a vote will be taken to submit the petition, the home rule petition to the legislature. After that vote, then the council will vote again on the home rule petition based upon the input of the voters, whether or not to send the matter to the legislature, providing approval and signature by the governor.
So yes.
Thank you, Solicitor Flick. Is there any questions, comments from the council? Counselor Walsh?
Again, as I mentioned earlier, the change that you've made to Section 2 indicates that the referendum would be non-binding.
Correct.
It can be binding as well, can it not?
I would say that's discretion of the council.
Why did you put it non-binding?
I was simply following what advice we received from the Secretary of State's office recommending that it be a non-binding referendum, since it has to go then to the legislature in Boston.
Well, and the reason I ask that is because the guidance from the legislature in the, as I mentioned earlier, I don't want to be repetitive, but it says, "The legislative enactment, however, as a matter of practice, the legislature had submitted to them," or "the City Council, us, or town meeting locally, almost always makes special laws," which this is, "to adopt or change a charter contingent on voter approval." Contingent means dependent upon it, doesn't it?
Again, that's guidance from the legislature. Comments we've received, both from House Counsel and from the Secretary of State's office, said that there's no requirement that this petition go before the voters, therefore it will be a non-binding referendum. If this council decides that it wants to make it a binding referendum, I would say that's at council discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Flick. Anything further, any further questions, comments for Attorney Flick? Counselor Boone?
Thank you. I'm just a little confused. Doesn't the legislature have priority over the Secretary of State's recommendation?
We received that information from both House Counsel, whose counsel to the House of Representatives, as well as the Secretary of State's office. Consistent comments from both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for Attorney Flick? Counselor Tyros?
Just to be super clear on Counselor Boone's previous question, House Counsel is the legislature's counsel. So they are, in fact, giving the advice as of today. But that is the process of all, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments? Counselor Walsh?
Go ahead.
Sorry, was there other hands up?
Go ahead.
Counselor Ron Cormier?
Very quick question. Then the question posed to the voters would be strictly a yea or nay vote.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments? Counselor Walsh?
Who spoke with the House Counsel?
It was actually Representative John Zlatnicki and I spoke earlier today, but I have also conferred with other colleagues who have gone through this recently, that's the exact same process that's been followed consistently by other municipalities. So this is well-established practice, as well as my review of the statutes.
I understand. Well-established, we're finding out about it for the first time tonight, anyway. Okay, thank you, that's my question.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. City Solicitor Flick, which representative would you contact if you need to get a hold of House Counsel?
Representative Zlatnicki, I can't contact House Counsel directly.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments from the council?
Just a comment.
Counselor Tison?
Yes, whether it be binding or non-binding, I believe that the citizens of Gardner should have the opportunity to vote on these changes that we're proposing. And I think that as we represent them, and I know we'll get into this further later, we should take that into consideration, their wishes, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further questions, comments for Attorney Flick from the council? Thank you, Attorney Flick.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 11039, "In Order Authorizing the City to Borrow," I'm sorry, agenda item number 11023, Charter Review Committee Final Review Recommendations, again, in the City Council and referred to Committee of the Whole and Law Department, 6/2023. Ask for more time on 7/3/2023 and refer back to Law Department on 8/7/2023. Is there a motion? Counselor Dernallawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to place the proposal on November 7th, 2023 municipal election ballot as a non-binding question for the voters to determine if the City Council should send this home rule petition to the legislature for enactment.
Seconded motion.
Motion made by Counselor Dernallawitz, seconded by Counselor Tyros to place the proposal on the November 7th, 2023 municipal election ballot as a non-binding question for the voters to determine if the City Council should send this home rule petition to the legislature for enactment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, as I mentioned in previous remarks, to me, the documentation we have from the legislature itself indicates that, and the city solicitor has determined, indicates as well that this can be binding or non-binding as we determined it to be. The motion on the floor is to make it non-binding. I think as I look at it, the voters should have a binding say on this, whether it should proceed or not. So I move that the item be amended to, in Section 2, to read binding rather than non-binding.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier to make it non-, I'm sorry, make it binding rather than non-binding. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Cormier?
I was just going to say, I would just agree with that proposal. I don't see the point of sending it to the people for their vote if we're not going to abide by what their wishes are.
Thank you, Counselor. Further? Counselor Walsh?
Yes, I just, I think this is, submission of this item to the voters is an essential element of the process. Well, not essential meaning required, as the council has indicated, but I think it's in our discretion to, what weight to give it. We should give it consummate weight because it is a significant event to amend a charter, and the voter's opportunity to weigh in on the changes that we've proposed is an important one. And so I'm hopeful that those, that the motion to amend will be approved, because at least from my point of view, if it's non-binding, I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Harder?
Question? Can I speak when I'm saying, because there is a motion on the floor?
Yeah. Counselor.
So like I said before, I've been going over this charter in my mind for quite some time, from 2016 or 17 until the present. And I believe I said this when all this started, so at the risk of sounding repetitive, this document has served us well for 100 years. Change shouldn't be someone's opinion or desire. Want is not a compelling reason. If we open this door, who knows what changes clearly will be made in the future. I can offer the life of me in good conscience support.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Heath?
All right, so, thank you, Madam President, first of all. When this first got put in front of us, I went ahead and I, you know, explained why I personally think that it needs to be looked at, and I would like to say thank you to, you know, the special charter committee, you know, like the mayor and others that went ahead and looked at this. Obviously, it's a lot of changes that were made, but with that being said, 100 years ago when this was made, as we celebrate 100 years, you guys wouldn't be up there, women would not be here, your votes would not be counting, I definitely would not be allowed in this building. You know, like, there's been a lot of changes in 100 years. So to sit here and, you know, feel like the change isn't necessary, or, you know, feel a certain way towards this, I just don't understand it. And I understand, you know, what you're saying, Counselor Walsh, I understand what you're saying, Counselor Hardin. And I agree with you both on what you're saying, but I just, go ahead, and I just feel like, you know, change is not bad all the time. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Heath, for your discussion. Counselor Mack?
Getting back to the motion on the floor, which is whether we are going to amend Counselor Dernallawitz's motion to turn this from non-binding to binding, it absolutely should, I agree, go in front of the voters. I just want to express my concern is to have something that's binding in between now and November. We also have the responsibility of making sure the voters understand what they're voting on and what the changes are. So I think that also has to be considered a part of this, because not everybody is going to, you know, see things online or be here at council chambers or, you know, do the comparison with the original charter as to, you know, what the, you know, what we're proposing. So I absolutely agree that the voters should have a say, but I'm just concerned about the time in this process and getting it to them and educated for them, so they understand what they are voting for, not just, you know, just our proposals, because they should have a say, and because there are definitely changes that need to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Tison?
I'd like to, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to echo what Counselor Mack just said. I truly believe that we do need to do our due diligence to educate the voters on the changes that we're proposing, as some of these changes are changes that law, you know, from the changes in law alone have required us to make to this charter. And I think, you know, making sure that they have the information, naturally people resist change, but I think from a charter perspective, this is the direction that the city needs to go to make these changes. So, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Tison. And Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I too support the sign, I'm going before the voters. I do not support the motion to amend. I believe there's a reason why House Counsel and the Secretary of State's office have instructed our city solicitor to put in the language as non-binding. In fact, on page 10 of the information we're handed here today, Section 2, Part A, even says, "The general court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless this Gardner City Council approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the general court." There's a process that is being followed. This is a legal, open, public process. We need to put it in front of the voters, and I do not support the motion to amend.
Thank you, Counselor Tyros. Further discussion? Counselor Dernallawitz?
Just to go back to, I think it was an early comment by Counselor Craig Cormier, saying that we will not abide, I think, by what the voters say. I think that's why we're putting on the ballot. We are putting it on the ballot so we can find out what the voters are going to say before we go any further and get to even the next steps of sending it to the general court. Giving it to them, going to let them make a decision, and to think that any members here would then turn around and vote contrary to a vote by the city, binding or non-binding, is counterintuitive to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Walsh?
I concur with the remarks made by Counselor Mack regarding the necessity of providing worthwhile information in a timely way to the voters so that they can make an informed decision. But that's going to be true whether the vote is binding or non-binding, of providing that information to them. And I'm not sure that, something that we've taken a year to get to, we now, we now have basically two months for the public to have the opportunity to look at. I agree with the substance of the changes. I believe that the will of the voters in making that should be abided, and that's why I believe the motion is, should be approved, so that that voice of the public is respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? City Solicitor Flick, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam President. In light of the amendment to the motion, I would just like to advise the council that the, if the council's desire is to make the referendum binding, it can only be binding on the council. We cannot bind the legislature in Boston. So it can only be binding upon the council, subject to then what the legislature does in Boston.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend?
Want a clarification, Madam President?
Counselor Boone? Counselor Boone?
So, Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry, Mr. Solicitor, that means that if the voters say no, the council can still say yes?
Well, technically, technically under the statute, if the vote of the, the approval of voters is not necessary under the statutes, however, if the council were to make it binding on the council, then I would suggest that the council, if the voters voted no, the council would then be bound by that no vote, as a matter of decorum, propriety. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, City Solicitor Flick. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, the clerk will call the roll on the motion to amend. So again, this is to change the language from non-binding to binding.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darlaud?
No.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Heath?
No.
Counselor Mack?
No.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
No.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kaczynski?
No.
Six noes, five yeses.
The motion does not, the amendment does not pass. Back to the original motion. Motion made by Counselor Darlaud, seconded by Counselor Tyros to place the proposal on the November 7, 2023 municipal election ballot as a non-binding question for the voters to determine if the city council should send this home rule petition to the legislature for enactment. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Tyros?
Yes, I would just like to add a point. Counselor Walsh pointed out that the timing, there's two months until the election at the ballot, this ballot question would be on. I think this is actually the perfect time to put this to the voters. They're going to be consuming a lot of information about the upcoming election, they're going to be listening, there's plenty of public information, meetings, there was public input on this charter back in February, where the public got a chance to speak on the matter directly, and I think November 7, they'll be able to speak with their, with their votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Boone?
Madam President, now that Counselor Tyros brought that up, I thought it's appropriate to bring up that if we're going to present this to the public, it's confusing for us. All right, let's go into this document, and then we go into this, and we get this handed to us, to have one document that shows the charter language, and shows what the changes are, exactly what it is, maybe even an explanation on why we did it. So it would be helpful, because otherwise, it's ridiculous to have to go through several documents. Several weeks ago, I put together a single document showing what changes this charter committee made, and exactly the language in the charter, and exactly what's going to be removed or be added. And so I request that that happens by the mayor's office to make this clear if we are going to present this to the public. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Further discussion? Counselor Heath?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to second what he's saying, because it's definitely confusing. I had to use, well, I didn't have to print out, but I had to keep on switching between screens on the iPad, and, you know, if there was a way of putting even maybe side-by-side, you know, the proposed changes versus the old changes, something to that effect, because it is very, very confusing. You know, when you put strike this out and everything else, like, I just think it's confusing. I mean, it's confusing for me. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Walsh?
Just to reiterate, although I support the substance of it, I think through the fact that it's not, going to be a non-binding vote by the public leads me to vote against the main motion. And I share the concerns of Counselors Heath and Boone regarding the explanation. I'm not sure this is ready tonight, but if it's going to a vote, I'm voting no.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Counselor Darlaud?
To the chair, I'd like to ask a question possibly to the city solicitor about their concerns. There is a difficult thing to go through with all the changes and, as I described, and what we are allowed as a city to get out to the public and what we are not in regards to giving them information. My understanding, there's a limited amount of what we might be able to do.
City Solicitor Flick, do you have any answer for that?
As far as publishing, what the changes are?
Publishing.
I don't think there's any limitation as to what...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you just go to the microphone, please, for the people watching? Thank you.
I'm not aware of any legal limitation as to what steps the city could take to present this to the public. Could it be a side-by-side?
Just one note.
Line for line showing of what it, how it reads now, how it will read?
I mean, if it's like, you know, mailing to the public or of that nature, is the ability to do that?
There could be, it could be published on the city's website, available through the city clerk's office, mailed out to the voters, similar to how ballot questions are mailed out to the voters.
Okay.
I would say that it's up to the city to take those steps to publicize what the changes are.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Nicholson?
Thank you, Madam President. We can certainly, just because Counselor Boone requested my office with this, we can certainly put something together. Legally, we cannot advocate for one side of the election question. It can only be a vote yes means this, a vote no means this, and this is what the question means. So we can absolutely put something like that together. In fact, the charter committee itself already did, so it's a document that we already have that shows the side-by-side of former city clerk, Agnelli, who served in the committee, actually put it together himself for the committee to use, so we already have that document. So we can certainly make that publicly available, polish it up if we need to, to make it more easy to understand. The only thing that we are liberated on is we cannot advocate one side or the other, it just can only say, a vote yes means this, a vote no means this, just like the red books that we get every year when the state has a referendum question. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion from the council? Counselor Tyros?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually glad the mayor brought up those red books, because I find myself reading the ballot questions over and over and over. I still don't know if I can plug my computer into my car, even after the vote. I trust the Secretary of State's office will do a fine job of summarizing the changes and through the public, legal, and follow procedures to put ballot questions in front of voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Final discussion, Madam President. Thank you. Side-by-side is still, I don't, if anybody's worked with Word, if you do track changes and you make a change that deletes words or adds words, it shows up in one single document, so it's not confusing, you can see what changed, what was there before, what's not. So I would advocate for that, and that's just what I want to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Counselor Mack?
Through the chair, if I could ask this of the city solicitor, because I still have concerns about getting this on the November ballot and rushing this, does he feel that this could be properly presented to the voters by November to make sure that the legislature will accept, you know, the way we've about this process? I think this, I think we're really pushing this, so I just want to ask him if this could come back against us, because we, you know, we're giving it to the voters in November, but we're not giving them a lot of time to review this, once we get the documents prepared and out.
Thank you, Counselor Mack. Attorney Flick?
By statute in Massachusetts, it only has to be 35 days before the election. There's more than sufficient time legally.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Mack. Counselor Darlaud?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to the timing of it, I know many of us here, many of the people in the audience pay close attention all the time to things going on in the city. There are others who do not, and I think especially this election cycle, they may be paying attention more early. We do have a special election, we do actually have a primary for the mayor and the school committee, so we may have hit a point where people are paying attention earlier, and will have, start consuming this earlier, because they'll be looking out, because there is an election, a preliminary election for the city as well as for the state senate seat. So I think we should strike while the iron is hot, and people will actually get a chance to read the document, read the changes, and come to a conclusion on their own. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion?
Point of audit, Madam President?
Counsel Walsh?
What's the vote that's required of this?
This, there's six votes required of this, we will do a roll call vote.
This does require a two-thirds vote?
This does not require a two-thirds vote. The, and if this goes to the voters, it passes the voters, if it comes back to the city council to go to the legislature, that is a two-thirds vote. Further discussion? Counselor Craig Cormier?
Just like say that, though I would have liked to have seen it binding, I do have faith that our voters are intelligent people, and we will be able to give them all the information they need to give us a proper response on their feelings on this.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing there is none, the clerk will please call the roll.
Counselor Boone?
Yes.
Counselor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Darlaud?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
No.
Counselor Heath?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Tison?
Yes.
Counselor Tyros?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
No.
President Kaczynski?
Yes.
Nine yes votes, two no votes, the motion passes.
We adjourn.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Tyros to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed say no. Motion passes. Meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everyone.